All right, we're going to call the meeting to order at four oh two. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. The open session part of the meeting will begin around seven P M. Public comment on closed session items before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on closed session agenda items?
There's no public comment on closed session items.
All right, seeing that there are none, the board will now adjourn into closed session. Okay, and we are returning to open session. Good evening, my name is David T. Gracia, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Assisi Domenos and Francisco Mesa. One of the interpreters will now translate the directions on our English channel, so our Spanish-speaking families may hear the instructions.
Buenas noches, esta es una reunión de la junta educativa del Distrito Escolar Unificado de Napa Valley. La reunión de hoy va a tener servicios de interpretación simultánea en español. Para acceder a los servicios de interpretación por Zoom, en breves momentos ustedes van a ver en la parte de abajo de su pantalla un icono del globo terráqueo. Van a poder hacer clic allí y escoger el idioma Spanish o español. Si ustedes están accediendo a Zoom por su teléfono móvil, en la parte superior derecha de su pantalla de Zoom van a ver tres puntitos y dice more o más. Al hacer clic allí van a ver los servicios de interpretación y podrán escoger el idioma Spanish o español. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. All right, can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes, Student Board Member Gomez?
Present.
Trustee Gracia?
Present.
Trustee Water?
Present.
Trustee Riser?
Present.
Trustee Shu?
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Present.
Trustee Hart?
Present.
Trustee Gonzalez Maris?
Present.
Coram present, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Morales. All right, thank you all for joining us tonight for NVUSD Board Meeting. Item E one, Report on Closed Session. Trustee Riser, do you have a report on closed session items?
Yes, regarding D one, Student Discipline. With respect to every item of business to be discussed in closed session pursuant to ED Code three, five, one, four, six, and four, eight, nine, one, two, dot, two, zero, Government Code Section four, zero, four, nine, zero, six, zero, and four, nine, zero, seven, eight, and the Family Rights and Privacy Act. Regarding Student Matters, D one A, Expulsions. Number one, the board recommends the expulsion for student zero, six, two, 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 zero, two, three, A. We need a roll call.
Do we have a motion?
A move to.
Second?
First by trustee two, second by trustee Riser. Ms. Morales, can we have a roll call vote on this item?
Yes, trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Riser?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Maris?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Item D one A two. The board recommends the expulsion for student zero, six, two, 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 zero, two, three, B.
Move to approve.
Second?
First by trustee two, second by trustee Riser. Ms. Morales, can we have a roll call vote on this item?
Yes, trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Riser?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Maris?
Elba?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
And regarding item D one B, Readmitted Expulsions. D one B one, the board recommends the readmitted expulsion for student two, one, zero, two, zero, two, two, A.
Move to approve.
Second?
First by trustee two, second by trustee Riser. Ms. Morales, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Riser?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Maris?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Item D one B two, the board recommends the readmitted expulsion for student three, zero, three, two, zero, two, two, A.
Motion to approve.
Second?
First by trustee two, second by trustee Riser. Ms. Morales, can we please have a roll call vote?
Yes, trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Riser?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Maris?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
And item D one B three, the board recommends the readmitted expulsion for student zero, three, two, three, two, zero, two, three, A.
Move to approve.
Second?
First by trustee two, second by trustee Riser. Ms. Morales, can we please have a roll call vote?
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Riser?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Maris?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
And regarding item D two B, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release Assignments, Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, six point eight. In closed session, the board approved a settlement agreement in the matter of American Canyon One LLC versus Napa Valley Unified School District, Napa County Superior Court Case number two, two dash C V dash zero, zero, one, one, four, five. Per the settlement agreement, the district will receive seven hundred thirty-six thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-two cents in developer fees. The two thousand sixteen school facilities funding agreement will be terminated as between American Canyon One LLC and the district. The complaint against the district will be dismissed, and the cross complaint will be dismissed as to American Canyon One LLC and Pacific West Communities. Approval was unanimous.
Thank you, trustee Riser. As board president, I also have the responsibility to report out on the superintendent evaluation. It is a process that we've been working on over the last several weeks, and I'm happy to report on behalf of the board that the superintendent had an extremely positive evaluation. The board completed this process, and all the trustees and superintendent have now signed the document, making it official. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to item E two, Flag Salute. Trustee Hart, will you lead us this time in the flag salute? This meeting is live streamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district's YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced on the district's webpage at nvusd.org. The process for public comment can also be found on the district's webpage. Item E four, Approval of the Agenda.
Move to approve.
Second?
First by trustee two, second by trustee Riser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Item E five, Approval of Minutes, E five A, the minutes from June eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Move to approve.
Second?
First by trustee two, second by trustee Riser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Item E six, Recognition of Visitors and Employee Organizations. Dr. Macedi, do we have any visitors in attendance tonight?
We do not.
Okay. Well, that makes that quick. Onto item F, Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. Trustee Riser, did we receive any public comment on non-agenda items via email?
No public comments on non-agenda items were submitted via email before eight A M. this morning.
Okay. And we will move on to public comments. I have two in the boardroom, so we'll start with those. The first is Marie Dulcini. That's fine, Susan Crosby.
Good evening, members of the school board, and thank you for giving us the time to speak today. I was a teacher in the, at NVLA for a long time, I think eighteen years, and I retired ten years ago. So I am here tonight because I've been working with Napa climate now, and I'm profoundly concerned with the, with the health of our world, our natural world, and, and with climate crisis, and in particular tonight with the plastic problem that that we all are creating and also suffering. While I was teaching, I came to a point of realizing that every, every science lesson I gave regarding animals, fish, birds, mammals, you know, all of them wonderful and, and a natural affinity between children and animals. And so many times they ended in, these animals are in danger, you know, plastic is killing them, they're losing their habitat. And, and it was, it became a, a matter of personal anguish for me to see what the kids were experiencing and, and really what we're doing to the world. So this group of enthusiastic Brooklyn kids at a public school cooked up the idea of having a plastic-free lunch day. And they did it with unbridled enthusiasm and finger food. When I first heard about it, I thought that'll be really hard, complicated, how, you know. But then when you, when I saw the video, it was a snap. So let me, I realized my time is just clicking away. Schools in the United States play an enormous role in contributing to the plastic waste crisis. One middle school may produce as much as thirty thousand pounds of plastic waste each school year, according to the University of Oklahoma. And we serve three point seven five billion school lunches a year in the U S. The production of plastic made from petrochemicals contributes to greenhouse emissions, climate change, and a negative impact on human health. Single-use plastic footwear perpetuates a culture of throwaway thinking. The country of France has done away with, uh, single-use plastic in all of their restaurants and cafes like that. Uh, so we can pretend we're French. Uh, and I hope that you will consider joining the, the school districts in New York City, Dallas, San Diego, Chicago, Baltimore, and Portland, Oregon, who all had a plastic-free lunch day last year. But I would really would implore our district to, to create a plastic-free lunch day every week. Um, and it's easy, and I think it will build the hope for change as well as actual change. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Susan Crosby.
This is Maria Dulcini.
Oh, sorry, Maria Dulcini.
Hi, thanks for having me. I wrote a prepared statement. I'm a communications consultant, the head tennis coach at Napa High School, a substitute teacher with the district, and a Napa Climate Now volunteer, as well as a parent of a Napa High School graduate. As Susan detailed in her previous comments, schools play an enormous role in contributing to the plastic waste crisis, and by continuing to offer utensils and other single-use plastics, they perpetuate the throwaway mentality that we were all raised with. As a parent of Napa High grad and current guest teacher, I can attest the huge improvement in school lunches over the past decade. The fact is, based on what I see in our district lunchrooms, be they primary, middle, or high school, we, we are nearly there when it comes to plastic free. Chef Alice Waters started the Edible Schoolyard Project in Berkeley in part based on the belief that learning where our food comes from, including growing and preparing it, should be intrinsic to a child's education. Given our current climate crisis, reducing food waste and single-use disposables has become increasingly important and should arguably be considered common core as well, and our schools offer the best opportunity to model more sustainable practices. For example, you could start the new year by introducing plastic-free Fridays or another target day district-wide when handheld foods are the norm, such as pizza, burritos, hot dogs, with apples, oranges, broccoli, florets. Then you could aim to add another day by mid-year or the following year and scale accordingly by reintroducing metal utensils and other reusables where dishwashers are on site. The resulting benefits would, of course, include positive press and increased savings from purchasing reductions to lower garbage bills. Today, Napa's world-renowned reputation is largely based on the foresight of those citizens who championed the once controversial idea of the ag preserve back in sixty-eight. As a parent, teacher, volunteer, and district resident, I ask you on behalf of current students and future citizens to pursue the ultimate goal of plastic-free lunch five days a week with the same visionary spirit. Like our predecessors, let's be leaders, not laggards. We stand ready to assist you in your efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment online?
There is no public comment on non-agenda items.
Uh, so, Dr. Macedi, I think that we need to clarify the record. Could you help us with that?
Yes, thank you so much. My apologies to, uh, the clerk, trustee Riser. When we, uh, read the clerk reports, um, we mistakenly, uh, read the settlement agreement, uh, between the American Canyon One LLC versus Napa Valley Unified School District under, um, Agenda Item D two B, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release and Assignments, mistakenly, and so that was just, um, an error that I'd like to correct for the record. Um, so that item, uh, should have been under item D seven B, Existing Litigation, Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, six point nine. So I just wanted to correct that. I'm, I apologize because it was, it was written incorrectly on the, on the clerk report that you read aloud, so that's all. Correct, that's under, um, item, it is under item D seven B.
And that would have been American Canyon LLC versus Napa Valley Unified School District.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on then, um, we will go to, uh, the reports, item G. Uh, and then we have G one, Board of Education and Student Board Representative. Uh, Student Board Member Gomez, would you like to start us?
Yes, of course. So, last week, I graduated. Um, I was also fortunate enough to speak at the Vintage High School graduation, as well as the West Park Promotion Ceremony. And although I enjoyed speaking in front of my own peers, as well as all of the family members and faculty present, the opportunity to speak at West Park was extra special to me. Just being able to look at all of those kids, especially the little fifth graders who graduated a middle school was a great experience because I have so many fond memories of when I was there and remember how big of a deal it was to me as I was graduating the fifth grade and moving on to the next chapter. It also gave me a great idea as to why so many of you are so passionate about what you do and why you love what you do, because seeing the joy on those kids' faces and how enthusiastic they were to be progressing forward was very heartwarming and inspirational to see. So that was a lot of fun and brought back some great memories for me. And given that this is my final board meeting, I would like to close my final report by addressing the work done by the people in this room and by expressing what learning through NVUSD has done for me. Firstly, this year, from my position on the board, I've been able to witness so many people from the bond campaign volunteers to my fellow board members, the executive staff, and so many more go above and beyond in nearly everything they did. What I saw from my perspective was that every detail was accounted for. Information was contextualized in a way that gave the district the best chance at making the best decisions moving forward, and people truly cared about the students and used our voices as a part of making decisions that directly affected us, even when significant resources were required to do so. Obviously, I personally don't have any experience anywhere other than NVUSD, but given that I believe these things, I think that this is a truly special school district. I feel that we are connected all the way from the top to the bottom, and that the district feels much smaller than it truly is. And I believe that this can largely be attributed to the type of environment that has been cultivated here, as well as the leadership carried out, beginning with Dr. Macedi, all the way through everyone who plays any type of role in the way that NVUSD operates and provides services to students. When I was in elementary school, all I cared about was being the best at what I did. I tried to finish every test before everyone else, while also trying to score the highest. I tried to run the most laps on the blacktop, and I tried to read the most pages in the school as I competed. I was the only one competing in West Park's summer reading program. But as I grew, I began to learn that not everything was about winning or being the best. Whilst still encouraging me to continue striving for excellence, there were a number of people within the district who showed me that I was capable of and should tap into a part of me that goes beyond competition. Throughout the years, these people, which included teachers and other district employees, inspired me to be a more complete person that advocated for the people around me, led by example, and picked others up when they needed it, rather than focus, focusing solely on my own interests. And now, as a member on the board, I've learned even more from all of you and have been enamored by many of the traits you portray as you tend to the requirements of serving on the board. Trustee Gonzalez Maris' compassion, trustee Hart's steadfast demeanor, trustee Jankowicz's ability to resonate with people, be personal, and make strong and wavering connections, trustee Chu's advocacy, trustee Riser's wildcat spirit, trustee Water's extensive knowledge, President Gracia's commitment to remaining true to his values, and finally, Dr. Macedi, the epitome of an effective leader that brings out the best in people and ensures that everyone feels valued and diligently pursues the goals of the district. You listen more than you speak, and when you speak, people listen because of the profound impact that your words possess. I'm grateful to have served on NVUSD's Board of Education, but even more grateful to have been an NVUSD student, learning from great people and studying alongside great students. I am prepared for my next chapter and have no doubt that the students after myself will continue to be given the adequate resources and preparation to tackle their own journeys as they progress beyond NVUSD. Thank you to the teachers, the board, and everyone else who contributes to the excellence of this district. And that concludes my report.
Thank, thank you for that. Trustee Gonzalez Maris?
As always, our student board rep is never easy. Um, but I know we're holding on some of our comments, so way to get it started. Um, anyways, it's, I have to process that and hold back any reply at this time, but, um, I think I'm just, um, reflecting back on the graduations, and you've completely, uh, switched what I was gonna say. Um, but it is, it's about the promotions, it's about the graduations, it's about the significant moments that our students are having that gives us, um, the, the, not only the moment of joy of seeing that, but it continues to answer the question as to why we do what we do. And I think that's extremely important in our work. Um, so that being said, it was such a privilege and a joy to be in, um, that front row seat that we sit at the stage and watch the many faces um, as they're conducting their, um, end of a journey in this really important chapter. And, um, and to witness, uh, a lot of the by literacy medals they're wearing and, uh, their speeches and their decor of where they're headed next. Um, and just, uh, the ceremony, the ritual that it's caused for that day, the joys and screams from the parents and caregivers and families and friends uh, from the bleachers, so that, um, just makes it really, really, really exciting. So that was, um, that was a lot last week, but it's, it's the, the part that we like to do the most in, and it's always an extra treat to be able to, um, to listen to our student board rep. Many times they are speakers and to be able to, be able to have one of us hand you their, your diploma in, in that special moment. So, um, that being said, uh, along with that important duty, as, uh, President Gracia said, we did conduct our due diligence and doing one of the most important tasks as, as a trustee is the evaluation of the work of our superintendent, and as I reported out, um, exceedingly, um, did, has done tremendous work, and I'll just quote Sam the next time we describe that because I think that sums it up. So that just concludes my report, and I, I guess wishing everybody a fabulous summer and a nice break. Um, and I'm glad to hear people are taking some time off, so you all find the, the rest and, and, um, recharging your batteries for the next school year. It's a lot of excitement, and so looking forward to that. Um, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Hart.
All right, so I was very honored and humbled to be able to participate in the graduation ceremonies this past week as well. Um, it was extra special for me, not only is my first year I was a trustee, but I actually have a son that graduated at Vintage High School and had the, the honor of handing him his diploma. And honestly, just seeing the hundreds and hundreds of kids that have gone through NVUSD and have reached that point in the graduation and seen, we have the absolute best vantage point because we get to look straight at them and see their faces and see their smiles and the interactions with their peers, you know. When someone's name is read and the horns go off and, and the stands and everything gets very exciting. So that, that was amazing and, and a great perk of this job to be able to participate in that scene. But you, I also appreciate all the effort in the hundreds and hundreds of instructional hours and, the teachers and the classified staff and administration that goes behind getting those kids to that point. So I think everybody really deserves a huge round of applause from us for getting our kids there and, uh, making it as successful as it has been. Um, as mentioned by Elba, we participated in the, um, superintendent evaluation, and then last night, we also had our annual priority setting, special board meeting, um, which was great, and we have a lot of great things on the horizon for us for this upcoming school year. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Jankowicz.
Mr. Samuel Gomez. We're doing it later?
Yeah.
Lord, people.
Yes, he's gonna have his own whole.
It was so ready.
Report everything that is not Sam.
That's most of my thing. Northwood Staff, Parent Faculty Club, and the Horn Heart Foundation, and Elena's Voice created a kindness path with, with a mutual goal to celebrate kindness and spread it to others. Um, I was invited to attend. The students wrote inspirational words on rocks for the path, and if one of the rocks happened to speak to a child in a moment of need, they were encouraged to hold on to that rock, and when they felt comfortable in letting it go, pass it on to a friend or bring it back to the path. It was a very inspirational afternoon. I went to Gail Young and Mary Denau's retirement party along with all my peers. Um, Rosanna shared some touching words, stories were told, laughs were had, and profuse gratitude to both Gail and Mary. and profuse gratitude to both Gail and Mary for their dedication, time and service to kids. They will be missed. I attended the Building Equitable Systems of Support webinar, which discussed mental health and access and resource challenges. And then the week of graduations began. I attended nine graduations. I loved them all, although I might've had a little bias when I learned that uh, Mr. Gomez was speaking at his graduation ceremony. The graduations are a reflection of what our future looks like. I am proud of these young people. The speeches were grounded, they were authentic, and they addressed real life issues such as mental health, bias, perspective, and what defines success. And the impact of COVID was woven throughout the majority of comments. Yet closing remarks were strong, impassioned, forward-thinking and hopeful. Graduations represent a million touch points for students over a four-year period, and everyone's contributions matter. Last week was the culmination of that work and I want to thank NVUSD. I do want to express special thanks to facilities and operations, what champions, they were everywhere, they were all things to all people at all times. They were professional, helpful and on top of everything. And I need to send a special thanks to Hector, who was always one step ahead of me. Um, and last night I attended with my colleagues the NVUSD Special Annual Priority Setting Board Meeting, and I too wish everyone a happy and relaxing summer.
Thank you, trustee Chu.
So I also attended, very grateful to be able to attend all the graduations I could. And I won't rehash, it's everything that he said and more. Um, and in addition to those graduations, I, along with trustee Riser and NCOE trustee Beederman, was, were judges at the ACMS UC Davis Computing and STEM Education Robo Play Video Competition where we were judging videos. And we also, well, the, the culmination of that was I got to present three video awards during the ACMS promotion along with Dr. Masetti. And I just want to read out the names because this is a big deal. They earned this in their middle school years that they could put on their transcripts. Or it is in their transcripts because they took Math One with Computing Robotics, but you can, you can also put it in your resume when you apply for jobs and whatever else. So the, the three video awards went to Jairus Buncio, Estrella Paramo, and Jada Persitz. So congratulations to them as they take that knowledge on to high school. And in addition to that, we, I also got to present the National Everfy Financial Literacy Scholarship, which is a national competition throughout the US. And we actually have a winner in our midst, Sanaya Chandi, who will also be promoting to ACMs. So congratulations to all four of those outstanding, I guess, ninth graders now. Um, and I also attended another promotion, which is my son's promotion from Canyon Oaks. Um, that was really special, but yay for getting out of elementary school. Now we're fully in secondary. So I'm looking forward to a journey having two kids in secondary school. And that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you, trustee Riser.
You, yeah. Um, let's see, I also really enjoyed being a judge alongside trustee Chu and Beederman with the uh, with Ms. Lee's Math One with Computing and Robotics Robo Play Competitions. My second year doing that and it was really cool to see the culminating, you know, quite complicated in some cases, products that the kids could come up with. Um, so I appreciated that opportunity. Thank you so much to Ms. Lee. Um, that day I also attended the Napa High Singing in the Spotlight, which is an annual tradition hosted by the a cappella group Vocal Music Workshop, but it's more than a cappella. It's an opportunity for kids to form sort of ad hoc groups and, you know, prepare and perform songs. Uh, there were musical number, you know, singing, but also instrumentation, kids bringing out the cello and the violin. Uh, there was a rousing round of applause for a clarinet duet, a classical clarinet duet that was really amazing and complicated. Um, so many thanks to Duncan Cooper and to Dave Ruane, who puts that on. He ends the show with a slideshow of the Vocal Music Workshop year in review, um, including baby pictures of all 12 of the kids. And it just really is another example of the way in which these VAPA programs build really strong community and make memories that I know the kids will take with them for decades to come. Um, I was so sad to be sidelined for the first two days of the graduation week. It's like the best week ever as a trustee. And as Virus had me flat on my back, but I beat back the cooties in time to attend Napa High Graduation and Vintage High Graduation. Um, it was a special treat to cheer for Sam as he very, very gracefully gave his speech and received his diploma. Um, and I also wanted to echo the thanks of trustee Jankowitz to Assistant Superintendent Pearson and your team. Um, once again, the graduations just went off flawlessly. Everything is so smooth and classy and beautiful. And that's no small feat when you're dealing with, you know, ceremony after ceremony and tons and tons of enthusiastic family and friends gathering there. Um, and now to end my, I don't mean to bring the mood down, but I am going to take a moment of, a point of personal privilege here and um, use my platform to say something to our community. We're, we're nearing the end of Pride Month. Um, and I really feel compelled to address the fact that there are ongoing incidents of bigotry and hostility against LGBTQ people in our community. Um, there was a beautiful pride banner in front of the Crosswalk Church, which is known to be um, one that, that is a church that stands for inclusion and belonging. So for a second time, their banner was vandalized and had to be taken down and replaced. I read a letter to the editor from a pretty well-known community member who does work with our youth in the community, Coach Bailey, who described her experience moving here as an LGBTQ person and the hostility and hate speech that she's encountered, including at the end of a very joyful event, the Pride Cruise um, that was started during COVID, you know, someone screamed an epithet at her at the end of this really joyful celebratory experience. Um, and there is, you know, a locally infamous resident on Brown's Valley Road who uses his right to free speech to broadcast uh, various messages of bigotry and hatred. Um, and currently his sign reads, "As God intended, make America straight again." Um, and it's just such a shame to see that kind of ignorance and hate in our community. Um, many loved ones in my life, family and chosen family identify as LGBTQ, so I take this hate speech and harassment very personally. Um, shame on you. You are actively going out of your way to be hateful to people that you don't know simply because of how they identify and who they choose to love. You're participating and encouraging bullying and othering that contributes to the anxiety, depression and suicidal ideation that LGBTQ kids suffer from. The Trevor Project survey this year, 2023, recent data found that nearly half of LGBTQ youth have attempted suicide, not pondered, I'm sorry, have considered suicide and 18% have attempted. Almost one in five LGBTQ youth in our country have attempted suicide. So I'm proud of our district, proudly wearing my NVUSD pride shirt today. I'm proud of our district for the way we publicly demonstrate our support for our LGBTQ students and families. We fly the pride flag, we provide inclusive instructional materials through our rainbow kits and through our literature selections. We are addressing diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging across this organization. And as Coach Bailey wrote in her letter to the register, "Come on, Napa, we can do better." This concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Water.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Rising. Um, well, I too went to the retirement party of Gail Young and Mary Do Now and I was a union rep when I worked at Napa High and I really appreciated Gail's temperate personality, personality when I get wound up about things. So, um, you know, she has earned her retirement and so has Mary. I too went to several graduations. And it was funny, I was standing in the grocery store um, this weekend and someone said to me, Cindy, I have to say, the Napa Valley Unified has the classiest graduations. I went to several and they just, they never disappoint. And I went, oh, that's so nice. And how do you know my name? And she said, you're wearing your name. Oh, oh, yes, I was. And, um, but I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank Mr. Pearson and his team and um, and particularly Hector, um, for Hector Gallegos for arranging for me to be carted around um, after I tripped and fell in the parking lot and it was all my fault. No, I'm not suing. And, um, and it was really my fault. And, um, and I had a great time. I had a great time. And I recommend everybody uh, tune in to the American Canyon, go one hour up to the American Canyon High School graduation. And you will hear a speech by history, social, well, social studies teacher, Scott Hey, Heyburn, that's it. I always, I keep thinking Hayward, Scott Heyburn. And it is a really unusual speech to the students. It was excellent. And just move up, you can move up to one hour. And I, you know, I went to the, and so did you, so did you trustee Jankowitz. Uh, we went to the first um, to the first promotion ceremony of Unidos. And that was lots of fun. The parents were so happy and it was great to see our dual immersion at middle school. Um, the ceremony went off, um, you know, without a hitch. Parents were happy. It was kind of like, uh, everybody was going to the prom. There was this backdrop and people were posing with flowers and pictures and the backdrop had the Unidos logo and colored balloons and all that sort of thing. And at Napa High's, Napa High's graduation is always special to me because my children went there and I worked there. And I was able to present the diploma to the last student, Chloe Dinsdale, who gave a wonderful speech in which she discussed um, a lot of the ordeals that our students had endured over the last three years. Um, things that were personal and things that were just in the, out there in the universe, you know, particularly COVID. And I was really proud of her and the other speakers for being so strong. And, and I've done, been doing, you know, community outreach and that sort of thing. And would it, this is the time for me to ask Mr. Michaels if he could run the film.
Correct.
Right. We have, um, uh, Ms. Crosby, I, and Ms. Dolcini had contacted me about this issue and sent me the film. And, and I watched it and I was thinking, it's, it's a big jump for us to get rid of plastics. But you know, in 10 years, I think plastic one-use utensils will be obsolete. And we'll look back and wonder, you know, what took us so long? And, um, and I've even been, you know, trolling the internet and looking up, looking up prices for, you know, bamboo and compostable cornstarch and that sort of thing. And I realized that plastic is, it's, you know, quite inexpensive, but it's really only the down payment. Um, we pay, we pay down the line. Um, so you know, I'd like us to watch this four-minute film and we'll love it because it's featuring children. It's all children.
Hello from New York City. Today we are excited to tell you all that Plastic Free Lunch Day, something that started in our school.
PS 15 and Red Hook Brooklyn, New York City. One nation wide. Yep, not only all of New York City, but schools across the whole country joined us for Plastic Free Lunch Day USA.
What do you know about Plastic Free Lunch Day? This is a news broadcast.
So basically, we will get served lunch with like no plastic and stuff like that.
Right. On Plastic Free Lunch Day, our school lunches are served with no plastic. So Plastic Free Lunch Day USA became a big climate action day. That makes a huge difference. Let's hear from some of the cities who joined us.
Hello, San Diego.
Welcome to sunny San Diego for San Diego Unified School District. When we sold the mission, reducing plastic, uh, the staff was excited. As a matter of fact, I remember one of them said, what have you been waiting for? The students were, were overjoyed. They're just like those young children in New York. They're, they're sensitive to the environment. They're sensitive to their future. So we did it in 200-plus schools and we think we eliminated somewhere around 70,000 pieces of plastic that day.
Great job, San Diego. Hello, Dallas.
Yeah, so Dallas ISD, we have more than 230 schools. We have more than 140,000 students. We are thrilled to be contributing to a better environment and a better world. And definitely there were staff members excited just at the prospect that, yeah, this is great, man. Now we can do something tangible. I'm doing something I can be proud of to be part of the solution.
Thank you, Dallas.
And Baltimore joined us and Philadelphia and Bensonville, Arkansas.
And many, many, many more schools and school districts joined us for Plastic Free Lunch Day USA.
That's right. After the success of Plastic Free Lunch Day in New York City, we teamed up with the Urban School Food Alliance, 18 of the largest school districts in the US. Now we're ready to grow this campaign much, much bigger.
And guess what? The next Plastic Free Lunch Day USA is coming soon. You can take action right away.
Yay. Thank you to everyone who joined us.
We live this every day.
Right. That's the goal.
Right. New York City schools now have a Plastic Free Lunch Day once a month. Plastic Free Lunch Day monthly, weekly, then every day.
Together, we can eliminate billions of pieces of plastic from schools across the US. Let's do it. So what are you waiting for? Join us to keep the plastic reaction going.
Thank you for watching.
So I think this is something we should be looking into. I can tell you're all convinced.
All right. Thank you. Uh, so um, on the ninth, I attended the interspace problem solving training with trustee Hart. Uh, and then I too attended the retirement gathering for Gail Young and Mary Do Now. I think the other trustees adequately covered all of the thanks for our graduation ceremonies. So I'll just list the ones I went to. I was at MVIS in Valley Oak. And then I attended the SMS promotion and then AMC and New Tech graduations and Napa High graduation, the Vintage High graduation. Um, and then, uh, I also went to the superintendent evaluation district priority setting meetings. Uh, and then on the 16th of the month, I met with Finn McGrath to begin onboarding our new student board member who will start in July. And that concludes my report. All right, we'll move on to G2 Board Representative Reports, G2A, Special Education Community Advisory Committee.
We have not met.
G2B, City of American Canyon Liaison Representative.
We have not met.
G2C, City of Napa Liaison Representative. G2D, Town of Yount Villa Liaison Representative. Moving on to item G3, Superintendent and Executive Staff.
Great. Thank you, President Garcia. Good evening, NVUSD trustees and community. I want to wish all NVUSD students and families a I want to wish all NVUSD students and families a joyful, restful summer. I want to congratulate everyone on successfully wrapping up another school year. The 2223 school year provided us a genuine opportunity to true, truly settle in for the first time since the start of the 2020 COVID global pandemic. I'm grateful for the hard work and dedication of all of our staff that got us to this point. I know many of our NVUSD staff keep working through the summer either through um, supporting our summer programs or getting our 26 campuses ready for the 2324 school year. So I want to share a special shout out to those employees who always do such an amazing job working tirelessly all summer while many of people are getting rest to ensure that our campuses are ready to welcome back students in August. Speaking of shout outs, and they were given multiple times, I also want to give a special thank you to all of our maintenance and operations staff and all of our high school staff. Um, I, I don't want to underestimate the amount of work. You know, our counselors, our teachers, our administrative teams at the high school, all of the contributions that made our graduations seamlessly be executed on. Um, and also our promotion ceremonies, of course, at the elementary and middle school levels. Um, these high school graduations, like everyone said, are pretty extraordinary and it all happens under the leadership of Assistant Superintendent Mike Pearson. And I want to thank him and his team. I also want to thank the Communications Office for doing an extraordinary job of working um, with our partners around video production aperture, um, who created just amazing archived videos and live streams in the moment with Spanish translation in order to ensure access to the graduation ceremony for families, community members, friends that weren't able to join us in person. Um, I did attend nine of the ceremonies last week. It was exhausting, but like the trustee said, it is always the most inspiring week of the year where everyone in our organization is reminded why we do what we do. So the graduation marathon is well worth it. So now we're on to the um, Samuel Gomez's segment of the agenda. Um, the rest of my report is dedicated to another solid reminder of why we do what we do. And that why is to serve extraordinary young people like our student board trustee and vintage high school class of 2023 graduate Samuel Gomez. Student trustee Gomez, you have done an extraordinary job in this important role representing all of the students of the Napa Valley Unified School District. You have served in this role with such brilliance, poise, curiosity, leadership, respect, professionalism, and integrity. You have this very special quality about you that all of us have had the privilege and blessing of observing all year since we met you last summer. You make everyone feel heard and welcomed because you are so incredibly present. You are an example um, of our district's motto of the last couple of years. Um, every interaction matters. And you make every person who interact with you feel like they really matter in this world. You are a fantastic listener, so I echo that. I heard you call me one too. Um, and equally as fantastic a speaker, as we heard at the graduation and in your um, report this evening. Your ability to communicate ideas and values is going to take you so very far in this life. I have deeply enjoyed getting to know you and have really loved working with you. You are an inspiration and I couldn't be prouder of having a young person like you being a representation of the potential of every student here in the Napa Valley Unified School District. Have a wonderful time at Northwestern University and of course, go Wildcats. Um, and lastly, before I toss to, I know all of the trustees have um, kind words to share about you. Um, student trustee Gomez, I do want to say that um, one of the skills you did not mention that I have in your report is I do have a, a vision around um, hiring and recruiting. And I just really have to tell you that uh, my vision, and this is mine, right? It's selfishly my vision. But you have incredible superintendent potential here. And I can always see a future Sam Gomez, Samuel Gomez, Dr. Samuel Gomez, sitting in this very seat and returning um, to his school district potentially to um, serve as uh, the leader of the educational community here. Um, you demonstrate a lot of skills that show that you already at such a young age have incredible readiness. So I, I call future superintendent out now and we'll see if my vision um, comes to fruition. So thank you so much for serving with us, Sam. And we're going to toss to the trustees who I know have a lot to say about your um, leadership and time with us. And then we're going to present you an award.
And might I say that last week you said CBO, so you already got elevated and a raise within one week?
After that graduation speech, it would be a waste uh, putting you at the CBOC. We got it, we're gonna, we're gonna push you to the superintendent seat. I mean, that's right.
Yeah, I mean, maybe CBO on the way to superintendent, Ryan, like.
Like that.
All right, trustee Jankwitz.
Okay. Again, Mr. Samuel Gomez, your very last board meeting. What a thoughtful, articulate, diligent, charismatic, intelligent student board rep you have been. There has not been a board meeting that your board report did not cause me to smile in appreciation of your viewpoint or your choice of subject matter. You took your role seriously. You were all in. You voiced your opinion. We're a genuine contributor and we valued, valued your insight. You took the time to understand the issues and then considered student impact and in turn elevated student voice. I know you will apply this same level of dedication to your next chapter. There is no doubt Northwestern is lucky to have you. You worked hard, you cared, and you earned respect and admiration from this board. It is quite an honor to be chosen to speak at your high school graduation. Your principal and your peers chose you because they knew your words would be meaningful and what you had to say would be relevant. I hope your experience on the board and your leadership role at VHS has empowered you to continue making a difference. No pressure, but you represent promise. Later in the board, later on in the board meeting, we're going to hear a presentation on some star data. And we use this information to assess student learning and effectiveness. It's interesting. Data versus what I witnessed at the podium last week. At a middle school, an independent study program, high schools, community schools, adult schools, fed graduations, data doesn't always capture the complete picture. And students are so much more than a moment in time and what I witnessed, and Sam, you are a prime example. The complete story is more than a statistic, but I respect Dr. Abud, all your stats. Um, thank you for your interest in this position and thank you for your time. You were generous with both. We will miss you, Sam, but we know you will do great things. I will never forget your humble moment of reflection during your interview. That trait will continue to serve you well. You made a positive impact on this community and now you're going to make a positive impact on the world. Thanks for reminding all of us what's possible.
Trustee.
Go now.
Trustee Gonzalez first.
She's really excited. Um, so am I. Um, but uh, I think that was a great um, segue for me because that's the moment I don't think I'll ever forget, Sam, is seeing a student in front of us who's interested in learning more, who wants to and may not know what they're getting themselves into at that time. But right there in the spot, you were having insight and reflection and just the ability to be able to communicate that with such vulnerability almost, but at the same time with confidence. And that it's okay to be in a space where you may not know, but that you're willing to trust the folks around you, to use the resources around you. Um, and that for me is very powerful to see a human being have that moment. And I think for you, um, it's not just at that moment. It's been at every board meeting, at every report you make, at the speech that you had, when interactions that I've seen you um, in other um, events. So um, aside from the academic, um, which is um, something to be proud of, but I think to be a person out in the world, you've done your, your due diligence to reflect upon what does that mean? And I'm glad that the, the, the schools, um, your experience at the schools offered that space for you to have that reflection. Um, and then to continue to grow in that because that is, that is something that's going to always be with you and no one can take that away. And it's quite sometimes much more powerful than a degree or any kind of um, particular skill because that makes you human first. And I think that's to me, one of the most foundational aspects of a future leader and I look forward to seeing that. Uh, we might make bets, but superintendent sounds good to me, um, especially of NVUSD. Uh, but I know you have um, other goals in mind, but may you open your mind to see what's the possibility because um, you're an agent of change. You're someone who creates change. And um, so please don't stop. Thank you for joining us.
Trustee Hart, did you want to say?
Yeah, I, I am not a flowery words kind of a person, you'll, you'll find. Um, but I tend to be somewhat succinct, but it has been a pleasure truly to get to know you over the last six months that I've been on this board. And I will say it has always been a hard show to follow your board report because it is so eloquently worded and put together. I especially liked um, the times when you would call out the, the public libraries offerings coming up and and you know, I, I love the library. I think that's great that you get that extra kind of plug in there for them. But I know you have great things ahead of you. I know we're all very, very proud of you and you've set a very high bar for future uh, student board members. So congrats and thank you.
Trustee two.
So the nature of my job, I spend a lot of time with very intelligent people. And I, I see a lot of them be able to navigate their, their subfields in science. And that's great because they're very intelligent. They're, they are able to drive um, society in their own way. But the most, I would say the most intelligent people I've ever met and heard from are economists. Because they're really able to synthesize things in the context of the big world. So I am not surprised that your major is economics because I see that in you, your ability at such a young age to be able to bring it up in a larger context. So I know that both you and Mr. Heyburn both talked about agents of change and Mr. Heyburn is actually econ teacher. So it, it makes so much sense that, that you have chosen where your, your path might lead you in the future. And I see great promise in what you're going to do. Yes, superintendent, um, maybe other, other, um, just as worthy causes, um, whatever you want to apply that, that brain of yours to. So um, be the agent of change that we know you're going to be because we're going to look forward to seeing you in the news in the future. And thank you for joining us.
Trustee Reiser.
Well, I, I think we've almost used all the adjectives that exist to sing your praises, Sam. Um, but I'm going to echo a couple of them in my own way. Um, you know, that you're the third student board member that I've served, had the pleasure to serve with on this board and everyone has brought their own take to the position um, and personality. And it has just been such a pleasure to see you come in and as trustee Gonzalez Myers said, that you, you embody this combination of intelligence and confidence, but humility and vulnerability at the same time. Um, so I, I encourage you to hold on to that balance because it really is what empowers you to connect with people and to be an agent of change. Um, you have been diligent and you know, brought such maturity and sensitivity to the role. I think that you um, have really excelled at being the channel for student voice. You know, that is what the position is meant to, to do. But I really, I, I think you, you've really impressed me in the way that you have, have in unstructured and structured ways sought that out and sought to bring that um, that input to us because it is you know, the most important thing for us to keep in mind is how do our decisions impact the students? Because you're our customers and you, you know, the providing students with the, you know, best experience and best education to prepare you for what's next is our mission. So um, it has just been a pleasure and I think that you have served as such a role model for your peers, I hope. Um, in how to get engaged in civic, you know, community uh, uh, causes. This is a huge time commitment and a huge influx of information constantly and you have just been, um, you've just taken it all in stride. Um, and you've brought us such insights, um, such, such important insights in your work. Um, and your kindness and the way you um, you demonstrate and embody include, the inclusion and belonging that we strive to, to uh, create and cultivate here in our district has just been really impressive. Um, I am beyond proud that you are going to be a Northwestern Wildcat, Go Cats. Um, and can't wait to call you a fellow alum in four years. And I'll just end by saying, you know, I wish you every, every joy and adventure and eye-opening, wonderful experience at Northwestern and beyond. I encourage you to keep your eyes open and your mind open to whatever that those experiences will bring. Maybe you will end up graduating with your degree in economics and pursuing in that direction, but it may be that when you get to Northwestern, something else will, will um, will pull you in another direction. So um, I encourage you to remain open to that possibility. Uh, whether it happens or not. Um, and I hope Northwestern knows how lucky they are, what a superstar they're getting. I've already alerted my friend who's a professor in the Journalism Department. Uh, Professor Walter is expecting your phone call and um, we'll be here cheering you on and cheering for you. And uh, we hope you come back and keep us updated and know that we have your back and we're so proud of you.
Trustee Walter.
Thank you, President Gracia. Well, uh, trustee, trustee Gomez, um, it's, it's really been fun uh, having you on the board and I, I'll echo my, my um, colleagues, you know, yes, we've established you're an intelligent person. That's wonderful, but you're also a good person and you're a kind person. And um, I, I like, I, I kind of think that um, you know, in, as you uh, move through the world, you're going to take all those qualities with you. And one of the things I really enjoyed was your, your um, reports, the meetings, but um, when you and your colleagues gave the presentation to us about what students wanted, you know, from their teachers, from their instructors, you know, the importance of the student voice, the importance of, you know, the students feeling like they were contributing, um, not just passively absorbing, you know, in education. I think that's something that we all need to, need to remember. It was a wonderful presentation. I went back and um, reviewed it and I thought, you know, that's pretty good. We should remember that. And um, the other thing I liked was, I like about you is I had, I had lots of students who would get anxious around college acceptance time. And I think you had an unusually mature demeanor throughout the whole thing. Um, and uh, that will serve you well. And I, I told you, I thought you would have some good choices and I was right. I like to be right. And uh, I, I do appreciate your um, your sense of humor and your patience with me when I kept uh, telling you what books you needed to read. And I really want you to read that book, okay, that I gave you. And um, go off and have fun. Um, you know, I'm, I'm expecting great things from you and uh, don't forget us and drop us a line and tell us how you're doing. About six weeks in.
You're welcome to make a public comment.
But you'll be limited to three minutes. Uh, okay. So I always look forward to the reports that you have to make. Um, I always felt like they were very informative and that I would have inevitably learned something new. um that you would bring to the table. Um, it was one of the parts of meetings that I usually would look forward to. Um, in fact, I felt compelled one time to sort of fill in and give a, a library update when you weren't here, just because it felt like it was missing from the meeting. Um. But one of the things I really appreciated was how you, you kind of went above and beyond just the, the board member aspect and you sought leadership opportunities where student voice could be heard and amplified, you know, by participating in things like the LCAP or presentations to the school board or just other, other areas to be involved in. And that was really impressive, just how dedicated you were to, to representing that student voice just across all areas of the district. So um, I was, I was very impressed with, with that dedication and your, your willingness to take leadership and really bring the student voice to us. Um, so I just wanted to say thank you for your service on the board over the past year and sharing your insights with us.
So with that, um to conclude tonight's um superintendent report shared with the trustees, um, I want to present to you um student trustee Gomez, the distinguished service award presented to you by the Napa Valley Unified School District in recognition and appreciation for your exemplary dedication and commitment to the students, families and employees in NVUSD for serving a student board member for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Come on up and let's give you your award and take some.
All NVUSD employees and their families will have access at no cost to our new provider, Optum Health. Optum Health allows NVUSD employees and their families such benefits as counseling sessions, financial coaching, and legal counseling and mediation services. Information on how to contact Optum Health has already been provided in both English and Spanish. And details about the program have been shared with all NVUSD employees through email and will be provided again once school resumes in August. We hope that this new program's twenty-four, seven tools and accessibility through phone and text will provide more flexibility and assist our employees and their family members in receiving support as soon as is necessary. Assistance also comes to some of our NVUSD employees in the form of financial support. This is the fifth year that our district has participated in the California Department of Education's Summer Assistance Program. This school year, two hundred and fifty-four classified employees will receive a nice check at the end of this summer as a result of their participation. These employees who work eleven months or yes, or less during the year, elected to withhold a portion of their monthly salary this past year and as a result, will receive a dollar per dollar match from the state. The state will match a total of five hundred eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars for the two hundred, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. For the upcoming twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we're excited to see an increase for this program with two hundred and sixty-eight participants. To end my report tonight, it is with great excitement that I can announce that the NVUSD is the very first district to have won the North Bay sponsored Spring Into Motion Employee Fitness Challenge. Not only did we have more employees participate in this interactive app-based exercise event than the other sixteen participating school districts, but based on an algorithm, we scored more points than the others, which ultimately led us to first place. In addition, for employees who opted to participate in the, in the program's team challenge, the NVUSD led the way with the Speducators team finishing in first place and Los Warriors finishing in second, which no doubt helped us to clinch our overall district win. Yay. We will be the very first custodians of this. The perpetual shoe trophy, which will be proudly displayed in the case just outside this boardroom along with the names of the Speducators and Los Warriors. Based on the success of the Spring Into Motion Program, North Bay is planning a similar program for October of twenty-twenty-three, appropriately named Walktober. And I have every expectation that I have every expectation that participation will remain strong and that this trophy will remain in the case. Thank you. And this concludes my report.
Great job. That was a great report, Mr. Luca. Thank you so much and we, we like winning. So that's so great. All right. So up next we have um Director Matt Manning, who will be providing the report on behalf of Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings, uh representing the Instructional Services Division. Mr. Manning.
Thank you. Good evening, President Gracia, Board of Trustees, Dr. Masetti, Student Board Member Gomez and the NVSD community. In support of annual board priority three, the ISS team continues to work collaboratively across all departments to prepare for enhanced and expanded transitional kindergarten programming beginning in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We look forward to providing transitional kindergarten at all of our elementary schools next year. The TK leadership team made up of experienced TK teachers has created a developmentally appropriate year-long curriculum guide that prioritizes key elements of the preschool learning foundations, which are the standards that currently are used to design TK learning experiences in California. Our plan for student learning takes into consideration the younger age range of students now eligible for TK. On June fifth, the TK leadership team provided an introductory session to our incoming and veteran TK teachers to help prepare them for the upcoming school year. On Tuesday of this week, a group of elementary principals attended a TK Principal Academy held here at the Ed Center where they learned from expert presenters about developmentally appropriate social, emotional learning practices and how the California Preschool Learning Foundations align to the common core standards for kindergarten. We are excited and well-prepared to welcome a new group of TK students in August. As part of the NVUSD Summer Mentor Program, four high school students are working in our Elementary Expanded Learning Program this summer. They attended the summer program teacher training held today and will be shadowing credential teachers for the next couple of weeks. The Elementary Academic Intervention Program begins next week and continues for three weeks. Mentees will learn how to lesson plan and work with small groups of students in a tutoring setting. For the remainder of the summer interim, interim program, they will be working alongside and shadowing site leaders from each of the partner programs, the Boys and Girls Club, Edmo and Cool School. The leads will mentor them in how to run extended day and summer programs. Our goal is to provide this group of mentees with hands-on experience in the education field and inspire them to pursue a career in education. The ongoing middle school strengthening process is grounded in the research-based tenets of the successful middle school program developed by the Association of Middle Level Educators, or AMLE. The AMLE is one of the oldest and largest professional organizations supporting middle-level staff. Last year, our middle school principal team attended AMLE Institute for Middle Level Leadership, where they inspired, where they were inspired and appreciative of the time to learn, collaborate and create together. From this, the team launched the building of common structures in twenty-two, twenty-three. Those structures being advisory, teaming and flex. Thank you to our middle school staff who helped transition our middle school students and staff this year and implement these new structures that support students' academic, emotional and social development. This week, a team of twenty-two middle school staff, site leaders and teachers and district leaders attended the AMLE Institute, which provided training on how to develop middle schools that are responsive, challenging, empowering, equitable and engaging. The team reflected on the implementation of the middle school core elements across each district middle school, learned research-based methods targeted to meet the needs of middle school students and planned next steps for, for twenty-three, twenty-four. Each school site has a draft plan for educating, for strengthening our middle school edu- structures of advising, teaming and flex, as well as additional strategies to strengthen culture and community, curriculum instruction and assessment and leadership and organization. In the Special Education Department, on Tuesday, we welcomed two hundred and thirty students eligible for extended school year for special education services to Northwood, Napa High, Vintage High Adapt classrooms and our post-secondary program. Students continue to focus their academic time on making progress on their individual education plan goals while participating in some summer fun. Each day, Northwood Elementary School welcomes students arriving on nine different school buses, while Napa High only has seven. Students are welcomed with breakfast and leave with lunch care of our fabulous food service department. While supervising dismissal yesterday, the team heard several students tell a bus driver or parent that their summer school day was a good day. The Instructional Division would like to conclude by thanking the site teams across all of our NVUSD schools. Collectively, they have continued to work hard to meet the social, emotional and academic needs of students. We are constantly inspired by their dedication, perseverance and resolute commitment to students and families. We wish everyone a very happy summer. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Manning, for sharing all the important work that's happening in the Instructional Division. Next, we have Assistant Superintendent Mike Pearson, who oversees operational services.
Uh, good evening, President Gracia, NBC Board of Education Trustees, Dr. Masetti, Student Board Representative Sam Gomez and NBC Community. Um, as all of you noted, graduation week ended last Thursday, June fifteenth. Uh, by the way, very nice speech, uh, Mr. Gomez. And don't forget, once a crusher, always a crusher. Uh, being a crusher. Uh, I am pleased to report that all graduations were a huge success and there were no visible hiccups. Uh, none of this would not have been possible without, without months of planning, which starts in earnest around late January, early February and concludes two weeks before the first graduation. It's truly a collaborative effort between the school site, maintenance and operations, uh, staff plus the district staff. Because of the strong cooperation and collaboration district and site staff exhibit and the strong community partnerships established, I believe NBC graduations capture the essence of what a high school graduation should look like to honor students completing uh their senior year. Plus the weather held for us too, which was very nice. I, I want to thank and honor several employees who put in countless hours, planning, preparing, constructing, monitoring during the graduation marathon, specifically Gloria Guire, our Director of Operations, Albert De Souza, our Director of Maintenance and Grounds, three lead workers, uh, Ray, Ray Rios, Tico Lara and Hector Gallegos, Marie McMurray, who is uh my executive assistant, Tony Lara, Kelly Holmes and Pedro Lara. And yes, they're all related to the Tico Lara as well too. They're the head custodians at the various high schools. Uh, Marie, uh, Mary Ann Christoperson and Drew Heron, who are instrumental in helping us make sure we try to eliminate as many of the paupers and as the noise makers. But I understand we have a little bit more searching to do next year. Uh, City of Napa PD, City of American Canyon PD, I also need to mention more district staff, Peter, uh, district staff, uh, Peter Abud, uh, Matt Manning, Susan Miller and Sarah Knox, who all volunteered to come and help supervise at, at one of our moral graduations. Uh, the City of Napa PD, the City of American Canyon PD, Napa County probation, and then finally Mid-City Nursery uh was very generous in donating all, all the, all the plants there. Uh, President Gracia, Board of Trustees and Dr. Masetti, you're pleased to know that in true Mike Pearson's spirit of planning, Mr. Abud can, uh, Dr. Abud can attest to this. Uh, staff has already debriefed the twenty-two, twenty-two graduation and has straw designs uh for the twenty-two, twenty-four. And if you don't believe me, I actually have it up here. If any of you guys want to come see what we've already talked about. Uh, I did let staff celebrate for about ten minutes and that was it. Thank you very much. That concludes my report.
That truly is Mike Pearson through and through.
Oh, we wouldn't be able to see it because the font would just be so small.
Okay. And uh lastly, but surely not least, um, we have Executive Director of Fiscal Services, Ms. Jenna Burrows, who's here. All right. Um, we have Assistant Superintendent Rob Manguala to provide us with the report of the Business Services Division.
June fifteenth, you hear me? Okay. Thanks. On June fifteenth, the Assembly and Senate approved the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four state budget in the form of Senate Bill one zero one. This fulfills the legislature's constitutional obligation to approve a spending plan before June fifteenth. While the legislature met its obligation, it does not represent a final deal with Governor Newsom. Once Governor Newsom receives the budget bill over the next week or so, he will have twelve days to sign or veto the measure. This twelve-day deadline effectively acts as the timeline for the governor and legislative leadership to come to a deal on the state budget. Once the parties come to agreement, it will likely be reflected in the form of a separate bill known as a Budget Bill Junior. The Business Office will continue to monitor the budget process with a keen eye on changes that would have a significant fiscal impact. The technology team is excited to get to work on several important summer projects, including network security and infrastructure improvements, PA system upgrades, Wi-Fi network redesign, and a complete physical inventory of all tech devices throughout the district. These projects, plus many smaller items on our summer list, are essential to ensuring students will have a safe and stable technology environment as they start school in August. The enrollment team have four successful enrollment events in American Canyon in May and June. Donaldson Way opened their doors for these events and the team assisted fifty-five families in registering for school. Additionally, enrollment has been working to support the preschool program, matureulate students, and will continue this work into the summer. We're at eighty-eight percent of projected enrollment in kindergarten and seventy-six percent of projected enrollment in TK. Staff are working daily to support TK and Kinder families complete registrations so that they're ready to start school in August. The Enrollment Center will be open normal hours, Monday through Friday, from eight to four during the summer. And last, the data and assessment team completed successful spring testing season, recently finishing up STAR testing and CAS. Later this evening, Dr. Abud will present a summary of the Spring STAR assessment data. We look forward to sharing the CAS data with the board later in the future after the results are released by the CDE. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Burrows. President Gracia, that concludes staff reports for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to item G four, facilities and bond program update.
Yes, thank you, uh, President Gracia. Later this evening, I'm very excited and pleased that the Board of Education will be taking action on improving the Measure A two implementation plan. School planning and construction staff have already met several times preparing tonight's implementation plan, which is one of the first significant steps to take the, to, to take the direct staff to improve school facility. which is one of the first significant steps to take the, to take the direct staff to improve school facilities in the American Canyon. Additionally, I'd like to also share that the Measure A two Citizens Bond Oversight Committee met earlier this month for the first time and had a very successful meeting. After hearing from bond legal counsel regarding the role and responsibilities of a CBOC member, the committee elected their chair and vice chair along with setting their committee meeting calendar. Chair in the Measure A two CBOC will be Anne, Anne Donata, Anne Donita, excuse me, and the vice chair will be Sylvia Regolato Zachold. The next meeting is September twentieth. We are still accepting membership. Anybody out there, you go to the NVUSD website and it's very easy to find the button to click on Measure A two to fill out an application. And that concludes my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we'll move on to item H. This is the approval of the Consent Agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion on roll call vote unless discussion of items is requested by a board member. Do we have items that will be pulled tonight?
Mister, excuse me, President Gracia, I would like to pull item C.
Wait. There's a little more to that designation than just C, right?
Right. H one C.
Okay, H one C. And then I'm going to pull item H four A B. Yes, double letters. First time I've ever seen that on the agenda. There are clearly a lot of agendized items tonight.
Is that, is that H four A field trips?
No, H four A B.
Okay, I would like to pull H four A.
H four A.
Discussion.
Okay. Any other items to be pulled? All right. Then can I get a motion to approve the other items?
I'll move to approve the other items.
I'll second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Gonzalez Mars. Mr. Michaels, is there any public comment on these items?
There is no public comment on these items.
All right, Ms. Morales, can I please get a roll call vote?
Yes, Student Board Member Gomez.
I.
Trustee Gracia.
I.
Trustee Water.
Hi.
Trustee Ricer.
I.
Trustee Chu.
I.
Trustee Jankowitz.
I.
Trustee Hart.
I.
Trustee Gonzalez Marius.
I.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, and then we will go on to item H one C. Trustee Water?
Yes, I just wanted to single out aperture media and design. I think it's, we're, we are very, very fortunate as a district and a community to have such a wonderful local business that does a terrific job for us. They had attachments, the attachments on the agenda. You know, for people to, this, this is a nice little touch so we can see the superiority of their work. I've been very pleased with their help in our public relations effort and I, I'm just happy that we can support a local business. That's it. I want it because a lot of times we skip over people, we just kind of nod when people are doing an extraordinarily good job. And I wanted to make sure that they got recognized.
Would you like to motion?
So I move that we, that we accept, whoops.
H one C.
H one C. I move to accept H one C.
I'll second.
First by trustee Water, second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, Ms. Morales, please, can I have a roll call vote?
Yes, Student Board Member Gomez.
I.
Trustee Gracia.
I.
Trustee Water. Trustee Ricer.
I.
Trustee Chu.
I.
Trustee Jankowitz.
I.
Trustee Hart.
I.
Trustee Gonzalez Marius.
I.
Motion passes. Thank.
Thank you. Okay, we will go on to the next item, H four A, Field Trips. Trustee Riser?
Yes, thank you. Wanted to have some discussion or at least elevate my concerns about the field trip for the Napa High band to Disney World. The cost of this trip is more than a quarter of a million dollars, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for a hundred and fifty students. And while I understand that they are having some musical, musically educative experiences, they're having a chance to march in Disney World and record in a studio. And I understand that, that those will be really memorable experiences. I, it just really gave me pause for a couple of reasons. One is I just think if we're really wanting to further and advance the musical education of our performing arts students, I'm not sure that Disney World is the, the most appropriate place to do that. And my other concern sort of ties to my personal comment in my board report, which is we are endorsing and sending a hundred and fifty high school students, some number of whom surely are LGBTQ, to go to a state that has codified bigotry against LGBTQ youth. And so I just feel really deeply uncomfortable to endorse sending our students into that environment. And I recognize that this is something that I'm sure the band students have already heard about, the trip. And I am really loathe to take away from them something that I'm sure they are already very much excited and anticipating. However, I just have reservations about this size of an expenditure and would really ask that the, the Napa High instrumental music program consider other opportunities. If not for this trip, then certainly for future trips. I'm, I don't want to be the trustee that takes away the fun trip from the band kids, in particular after the, you know, run of years that these kids have had and all the things that they have missed out on. So I'm willing to approve it for this next school year. But I would really seriously ask the Napa Hyper, uh, Vapa Department to find other educative experiences for our performing arts kids that have more bang for their buck than, you know, a couple of days in Disney World for a quarter of a million dollars.
I would just like to point out that this is being paid for by the band boosters. This is something that parents are doing fundraising for, and this is not something that the district is paying for. So I don't feel like this is necessarily something that we need to be overly excited about as if this is how the parents choose to spend their money that they have raised on sending their students halfway across the country, I feel like that's sort of up to them.
Well, yeah, it's all the way across the country and I, I think that Disney World is kind of standing up to the, to the anti-LGBTQ bias that has, as you said, been codified in Florida. But we do have Disneyland in California. And I was just wondering if they, do they offer the same sort of experience that Disney World is offering?
I have no idea.
Because it is so much money.
ACHS just went to Disneyland. Yes, it would have been.
So they do have some.
So they do.
Okay, so. I mean, you know, we have Disneyland, we have the original Disneyland. I can't believe I'm sticking up for Disneyland. As an English teacher, Disneyland drove me crazy. You know, it didn't, have you ever read Alice in Wonderland? No, but I saw the movie. Okay. But really, I'd like us to try to keep our kids a little bit closer to home if we could in the future. And I'm going to support this because I do know that the boosters have raised money and I do know that the student, that this has been sold to the students. This is what they're expecting and I don't want to be completely no fun, but I'd like to, us to look a little closer to home next time.
Or for me, if it's farther from home, have it be an experience that is vastly different than one that they can get in California. I mean, for a quarter of a million dollars, they could be front row with a New York Philharmonic, having a real cultural experience.
Look, I'm not a Disney fan, but far be it from me to decide whether or not this is relevant to their development in this way. Clearly, they see some value in this program. They've chosen it. They've raised money for it. I think a lot of thought and effort has gone into it. So I, I don't see why we would not approve this tonight.
We're gonna.
Move to approve?
Second.
First by myself, second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Hey, Ms. Morales, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Student Board Member Gomez.
I.
Trustee Gracia.
I.
Trustee Water. Trustee Ricer.
I.
Trustee Chu.
I.
Trustee Jankowitz.
I.
Trustee Hart.
I.
Trustee Gonzalez Marius.
I.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and then we will move on to H four A B. Yes, two letters. First time since I've been on the board that we've had a dual-letter item. Yes, it's that long of an agenda. But anyhow, I had some questions on this item. It was listed on the agenda as a no cost to NVUSD, but as I reviewed the fee schedule, it seemed to indicate that there was a possibility that we would have to split the cost if twelve or more students participated in the program. And so I was just trying to get clarification on whether or not there is actually potentially a cost to us if twelve or more students were to participate.
Yeah, so thank you, President Gracia. And thank you very much for your inquiry and for pulling the item. As per our discussion and after having the Instructional Services Team do some research and confirmation, you are correct. And the description on the agenda item itself did say zero, zero dollars in terms of fiscal impact. And that is not correct. It does have the potential of costing NVUSD up to fifty-five thousand dollars, as you have named. That is described correctly in the fee schedule. So for the record, we are correcting that before approval. The, again, the fee schedule in the attachment of the item is accurate and correct. And just to note, in this past year, there, this, this contract was implemented. It is a renewal. And we did play, we did not have to make a contribution because we did not hit that number this past year. So that may be true again in this upcoming year. For the record, we will correct that the fiscal impact is up to potentially fifty-five thousand dollars depending on enrollment numbers.
Thank you. And with that adjustment, I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
First by myself, second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Right. Ms. Morales, can I please get a roll call vote?
Yes, Student Board Member Gomez.
I.
Trustee Gracia.
I.
Trustee Water.
Hi.
Trustee Ricer.
I.
Trustee Chu.
I.
Trustee Jankowitz. Trustee Jankowitz.
And again, I.
Thank you. Trustee Hart.
I.
Trustee Gonzalez Marius.
I.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, it hasn't quite been a full two hours, but nearly so. So I think we'll take our break now and then come back for presentations. So we'll be out for five minutes-ish. Uh, and then come back for presentations. So we'll be out for five minutes ish. Okay, and we are back after that short five minute break. Uh, we're now on to item I, presentation and discussion items. Item I one, business services. I want a spring twenty twenty-three star assessment presentation.
All right. Good evening, everyone. President Gracia, trustees, Dr. Masetti, and student board member Gomez. Uh, this evening, I will provide a summary of our STAR assessments data for the spring of twenty twenty-three. Our district work around assessments falls under our strategic plan goal number one, student learning, achievement, and access. And it also supports our district's work around MTS, MTSS literacy and math. As a reminder, the STAR assessments are screeners that we administer to students three times per year and measure students' literacy and math skills. Students in grades three through twelve take the STAR reading test. Students in kindergarten through second grade take the STAR early literacy test until their reading abilities develop enough that they can be reliably assessed with STAR reading. Uh, typically this hap- typically this transition happens in grade two. And students take, students in grades one through twelve take the STAR math test. This is our third year utilizing the STAR assessments, and we've established many systems across our district which rely on this data. These include using STAR as one indicator for determining which students would benefit from intervention supports, use of the data in areas analytics, reclassification of English language learners, and secondary course placements. Uh, test, STAR test scores are also predictive of student performance on the CASP, which I will speak uh, speak about a little later in the presentation. Uh, before we dive into the data, I'd like to take a moment to remind the board and community about some key data points that we've looked at in the past and will look at again this evening. First, the scaled score. Students who take a STAR assessment are given a scaled score based on the number of questions answered correctly and the difficulty of those questions, and allows us to compare student progress over time and across grade levels. Next, we have the percentile rank. Students are given a percentile rank indicating the percentage of other students nationally who obtain scores equal to or lower than that of the particular student. For example, a student in the thirty-fifth percentile in STAR reading performed better than thirty-five percent of students nationally in the same grade level as that student who took this, who took the assessment at that same time of year. Uh, Renaissance then categorizes students based on their percentile rank. Students who score better than forty percent of students nationally in their grade level at that time of, at that time of the school year are considered at or above benchmark. There are four total categories ranging from at or above benchmark uh, all the way to those in need of urgent intervention who are scoring below the tenth percentile rank. It is important to remember that students who are, students are expected to earn a higher and higher scale score as they progress through their learning. Uh, for example, an eighth grader who took the STAR math test in the fall needs a scaled score of ten seventy-eight to be at or above benchmark. And that minimum scale score increases over time. And by the time that eighth grader takes the test in the spring, they will need a scaled score of ten ninety-four. And now the results. Um, I'll be sharing with you results tonight from the fall, winter, and spring screening windows this year. Uh, the slide shows by grade span, the percentage of students who are considered at or above benchmark for all three screening windows for both math and literacy. You'll notice a general trend on this slide as well as the, the data that we'll see by grade level, where there tends to be an increase from the fall to the winter, followed by a slight increase or decrease from the winter to the spring. This pattern is largely consistent with the results from the twenty-one, twenty-two school year uh, and is all, and also follows the national trends with STAR. Here we break the data down further by subgroup. The performance of our subgroups is consistent with what we've seen in the past, including last spring of twenty twenty-two. Students who are English learners and students with individualized education plans receiving special education services tend to underperform compared to the overall population. Uh, what you see on this in the following slides is our spring twenty twenty-three data compared to the fall and winter screening windows from earlier in the school year. Uh, the numbers represent the percentage of students who are considered at or above benchmark or in the fortieth percentile or above. Uh, and the slide shows the STAR early literacy comparison for our kindergarten students. Uh, as you may recall from previous presentations, second graders take the STAR early, early literacy test or STAR reading tests uh, depending on their skill level. Uh, when looking at the spring of twenty twenty-three data, we also saw a number of first graders shifting from STAR early literacy to STAR reading. Uh, because of, of the two uh different tests at these grade levels, it's difficult to compare growth over time. And so instead, I share with you the number of students taking each test for each screening window for both grade levels. Uh, by the end of first grade, two hundred eighty-one students took the STAR reading test while seven hundred seventy were still taking STAR early literacy. And by the end of second grade, eight hundred fifty-eight students were taking STAR reading while two hundred fifteen were still taking STAR early literacy. Uh, the overall increase in the numbers of students taking the STAR reading test over time is indicative of students' literacy development during the, during these beliefs. I hear the proficiency rates for STAR reading at the elementary level. When we look at the difference between the fall and the spring, the grade levels all show a net increase. Of particular note, growth in third grade STAR reading grew by eight point seven percentile rank points, which is more than double the rate of growth for fifth grade and almost double that of fourth grade. Uh, here are the results for middle school for STAR reading. The percentage of students at or above benchmarks shows minimal changes across all three grade levels. Sixth and eighth graders, sixth and eighth grade show a slight net decrease from fall to spring, and seventh grade shows a slight net increase. And here's the high school data for STAR reading. Ninth and tenth grade show minimal net changes from fall to spring. Eleventh and twelfth grade show slight decreases from fall to spring. And we now switch over to STAR math. Uh, when examining the STAR math data in first through fifth grade, all grade levels showed an increase in the percentage of students scoring at or above benchmark from fall to spring. Uh, the average increase here was five point two percentile rank points. Second and fourth grade students showed increases higher than the average, uh, which were nine point five points in second grade and six point seven points in fourth grade. Uh, at the middle school level, STAR math uh shows minimal growth across the three grade levels from fall to spring. And for grades nine through twelve, STAR math results vary by grade. Ninth grade shows an increase, tenth grade generally remains flat, while eleventh and twelfth grade show decreases from fall to spring. Um, at my last presentation, there was a request to view STAR cohort data. This slide shows the percentage of current elementary, middle, and high school students who scored at or of, of benchmark on this last screening window in STAR reading compared to their scores last spring. So both bars represent the same group of students across two school years. And the average scaled score for each group of students from one year to the next did increase, but it did not increase enough to maintain the percentage of students at or above benchmark. And so we do see a decrease on, on this graph. The average decrease was three point five percentile rank points with middle school exceeding that average decrease. And here we see similar data for the STAR math test. The average decrease here was four point four percentile rank points uh, with the middle school students again exceeding that average. Um, I'd also like to take a moment and talk about student growth from the fall to the spring. Uh, another data point provided by Renaissance is the student growth percentile or SGP. Uh, we've talked about this before, but as a reminder, the SGP indicates the percentage of students nationally at the same grade level and with a similar score history as a particular student who grew less than that, that student over a defined period of time. For example, a student with an SGP of sixty from fall to spring grew more than sixty percent of students nationally who had a similar score as that student in the fall. Students with an SGP between thirty-five and sixty-five are making typical growth, while those with an SGP below thirty-five are making low growth, and those with an SGP above sixty-five are making high growth. Overall, just two, uh, just under two-thirds of our students made typical or high growth in both literacy and math compared with their peers across the nation. This is similar to what we've seen in prior screening windows. And I want to emphasize that growth is not the same as proficiency. Students who are making typical growth may or may not be considered at or above benchmark. This slide provides a little more detail on which performance levels students are at based on their growth category. And I've highlighted particularly notable numbers here. When it comes to literacy, over half of our students making typical or high growth are performing at or above benchmark. And forty-one point nine percent of students making low growth are performing in the urgent intervention category. For STAR math, about two-thirds of students making low growth are either at or above benchmark or urgent intervention. And one, about one-third in each category, and about two-thirds of students making typical or high growth in math are scoring at or above benchmark. Um, and as I've done in the past, I'd like to remind the board and community that just because a student is considered at or above bench, benchmark based on national norms, that it does not necessarily mean the student is proficient based on state standards. This chart compares the percentage of students who are nationally at or above benchmark in STAR reading to the percentage of students who have met or exceeded standard on the state benchmarks, which are designed to predict performance on the CASP. You might recall from previous presentations that the state benchmarks on STAR are highly predictive of CASP, of CASP performance. And so we have a, have a high level of confidence that the spring scores in the blue rectangle are very close to what we're expecting our CASP results from this spring to show. And here we have similar data for math. Uh, again, the results in blue are what we're expecting our CASP results to show, um, once we get the official results from the state. And with that, I will open it up for questions or comments.
Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
Uh, there is no public comment on this item.
Just teaching. So, um, I wanted to go back to this national versus state benchmarks, especially for math, because that's something that, you know, we were constantly working on. And I had brought up this question um previously about my own son's experience with CASP and how that may or may not translate with this. So can you tell us a little bit more about what the CASP test has that may or may not be reflected in that you see in STAR? I think there, there's like slight differences, right, uh, in what CASP does? And should we be expecting these numbers? Maybe that should be.
Yeah, to, to clever, are you asking about the difference between the state and the national benchmark? Absolutely. Um, Nikki, could you go back to that slide? So we have that as a visual. Thank you. Um, so great question, and thank you for um, uh, bringing that up again so that we can remind folks about the difference. So the um slide that um, so the, the national benchmarks are really comparing the students to their peers across the nation. So that's a great benchmark to use when um interventionists or classroom teachers are looking to see who might be needing a little bit more support. Uh, like, it really does a good job of, of triaging kids into those four categories. Now, with that said, that's not comparing students' performance to the state standards, which is what the state benchmark does. So the state benchmark, which does do that, is uh, is what is designed to predict performance on the CASP. So the answer to your question is yes. Um, those results on the right there under the state benchmark are what we're expecting our, our CASP results to show, because those are benchmarked to the state standards, which is what CASP assesses.
Okay. And also, um, I was struck by what you've used STAR results for last time with Dreambox. Really appreciated the use of data in looking at how do you, how do you move the needle, right? If you have a lot more um Dreambox usage, then you're gonna see it reflected in your STAR reports. So are there, um, I don't know what other areas that you, you might want to explore in looking? I, I mean, is that the intent that we can use this to evaluate even programs or, or things like that, that we're, we're trying to implement at our level to see whether that's actually moving the needle?
Yeah, absolutely. That, that is a great question. I'm, I'm very excited to hear you ask about that. So one of the things that the data team is going to. Yeah, absolutely. That that is a great question. I'm I'm very excited to hear you ask about that. So one of the things that the data team is going to be doing this summer is um uh, as you all know, you approve the the purchase of Tableau, which is the software that we use to perform a lot of data analysis. So the summer, what we're doing is we're actually overlaying on top of those tableaus a lot of these um additional factors that can impact learning. So we're going to be looking at attendance rate. We're going to be looking at students in DLI programs. We're going to layer upon them the uh the number of Dreambox lessons that students have done. Um, students who participated in the summer ELOP program that Director Manning was talking about. Um, uh, students that have teachers that have been trained in the science of reading, right? So we're gonna start overlaying all of those filters on top of that tableau. Um, and so so yes, our 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 goals in the next few weeks, we'll be able to start looking at that data even more closely and see what are these programs that are impacting um student learning. And so we've got a nice long list of them, and the data team is working hard on that over the summer. So uh so absolutely, um, star data can help us evaluate what's working and what's not, so that we can really make those important instructional decisions.
Great. I'm looking forward to a presentation of your hopefully about that. Um, and my last question is kind of related in that we know that with Dreambox, if you use the program to fidelity, how it's intended, you do see a nice growth. How can we use that to kind of communicate to parents saying that, well, can we help the student even at home to access this? Because I I shared the your data from that um with some of the parents and I said, oh, you know, it's summer. If you really want to, you probably can get online and and see if you can use Dreambox. And they said, oh, I didn't know we can use Dreambox during summer. So is there plans to kind of? Yeah, I I yeah, I I believe so, right?
Yeah.
Yes. So is there? Are there plans to kind of give a little bit more education to the parents to help them support their child in like providing the I I I think a lot of people don't understand how powerful that is, right? With more practice that you will get mastery. And I think it, we need to remind parents. I mean, I know that they know, but we probably need to remind parents that they have the tools, they can even use it at home during summer breaks. Are there plans to give a little bit more parent education about that, at least to share? I don't know if it's better at the school site or from a district level, but um it it just seems like that's the way to go.
Yeah, that's a that's a great question. And I think um from a data standpoint, once we identify what are those really effective tools are in Dreambox, we already know is one of them because of a a study that I know Director Knox shared at a previous uh board meeting. Um, then I I I think we can certainly look at what that looks like. Uh, I don't know if there are any uh plans from the instructional standpoint um on that, but definitely as we identify those those tools, we can start looking at what what do those next steps look like where we can um support families and um and really leveraging those tools that we know work.
Can I just, um, Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings is online this evening. I just wanted to let him the opportunity to comment on that.
Um, thank you, Dr. Masetti. Um, yes, and to address our um um trustee choose question. Um, we do have plans to um work with parents and provide them information around now that we have the study completed um around how um effective Dreambox has been, especially if you complete five, at least five lessons a week, then that information will be communicated out as we start the new school year. Um, one of the things that we also are uh looking at is assessing how many students are assessing lessons after during the evening time versus during the school day and seeing how we can leverage that time um for home during homework, um homework opportunities for students.
So how many of our programs, our online programs are accessible to parents right now and during the summer when school's not? Is it most, most of them?
It it would be most of them, yeah. My my team keeps pretty much all of those tools rostered and ready to go over the summer. So there's very few exceptions to that. So generally speaking, yes, most families and and kids.
Can we send out a communication saying, hey, if you want to kind of keep keep up with some of the growth that you we're seeing in our students, um, you have access to these. I mean, you can't enforce them, but at least to give out that communication.
One of the challenges at the elementary level, uh trustee two, is that our um students at the elementary level don't have devices that they typically take home um over the summer, whereas at the middle school and high school level, they have devices, they have access to their devices year round. Um, oops, sorry, I'm in a classroom. Give me a sec though. They have auto, the lights turn off automatically. Um, and so um our students don't have access at the um elementary level unless they um have their own device at home during the summertime. One of the great things, though, is that because of we have our expanded learning opportunity program and the intervention teachers that are working there and because we are coordinating with our uh partners, they do have access to programming that we use um that they can um that students who are engaged in expanded learning, they can access that during the summer, even if they don't have a device at home.
Right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I was just gonna add that we, in the last family newsletter that went out, I believe it was on June eighth, um, we did put in there a a note to pa- parents that if your child is enrolled in system forty four or we win eighty or math one eighty and all all the K eight students are enrolled in Dreambox, um, Imagine Learning, that those programs would continue and they would continue to have access through clever over the summer. As uh, as Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings said, it's harder with the kids who don't have the one to one, but a lot of them can go to the library or access it. Um, you know, where they do have access to an advice. So we did let them know that that would be available and and we continue to get questions from from parents around, um, you know, do I have access? How long am I gonna have access for? And it's gonna last until the rollover of Aries until early August, just to the start of the school year that they'll have continued access over the summer. So uh we let them know in in the family newsletter and then also in the individual school newsletters as well.
I I did see that. I'm still getting questions from parents. Maybe they don't read all the way to wherever the 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 place is, but.
Yes, um, we can always share it again. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Josie Reiser.
Thank you. Um, thank you so much for the presentation, Dr. Abud. Um, it's really exciting to see how you continue to advance and refine your use of this tool um to help us be more and more strategic in the ways we offer supports to our students. Um. You know, I I'm concerned, as I'm sure everyone on the dais is here, that our students aren't showing as much growth that growth as we would hope, but you know, I'm gonna give my speech that I always give, which is that it's really critical to take the information in context. Um, so that's my concern is that um, the broader community or parents and students who would access this information might take it out of context and be discouraged and feel that their hard work is not paying off. Um, you know, this is, it's really important. I understand that we chose Renaissance and chose the star test as our sort of three times a year snapshot yardstick. And I understand and you've explained, you know, so clearly and so well for us and for the community, why it's important to have that. Um, but it's also a snapshot, you know, if you take a if you take a group photo of sixteen thousand people, you know, there's bound to be a bunch of them making weird faces and with their eyes closed and you know, in that same, maybe that's a weird analogy, but you know, kids are coming in on any given day, bringing in whatever it is that they brought in um that might make it harder for them to do well on this test. Um, you know, this is not the the challenge that we're facing and that we're seeing reflected in this data is not unique to NVUSD. This is not because something our teachers or our um instructional division leaders or our organization as a whole are doing or not doing right. Um, this is national. This is a national issue. The missed instruction and the trauma that students collectively went through during the pan- uh pandemic are manifesting in all kinds of ways, learning loss, mental health struggles, difficulty with social emotional skills, delayed emotional development. Um, and our job is to keep in mind the whole child and the and the the development and the support um and the success of the whole child. Um, so the I I have a lot of reasons to be optimistic. Um, the majority of our students are making typical or high growth despite those conditions. That is impressive. Um, we are uh taking the steps. We've identified strategically and with with the, you know, collective expertise of our team, we're taking steps um to support the kids. When needed, we're getting the high quality curricula. We are making sure that our teachers are fully supported, both in learning how to use that curriculum and then in engaging in communities of practice to talk about how it's going and how to do better. Um, you know, our we're getting our site leaders more involved in really it as instructional leaders and and sort of making protocols about how to make sure that they are involved in that. We have focused interventions and we're tracking them through our MTSS system. Um, and you know, despite the fact that our labor shortages have made those intervention programs that we've carefully identified and designed, it's made it difficult to implement them fully because we haven't had the the people to do it. And of course, we always have are facing the, you know, lackluster funding from the state of California. We know that we rank pretty close to the bottom in per pupil funding. Um, and so when facing a national crisis of learning loss or missed instruction or whatever phrase we use, it's um, it's really important to keep all of those factors in mind. Um, not saying that you don't do that, but I just want to surface that for whoever may be listening or will come back later and watch this presentation. We're we're targeting priority standards and proficiency scales to give students and teachers and families greater clarity about what it is that they need to be learning and how they're doing and how they're progressing and getting that, you know, ownership of your of your learning. Um, and and clarity about what it is that you're working toward is gonna be incredibly powerful. Um, but I've said this many times, you don't turn a ship on a dime. This is a huge undertaking and education is messy. Human beings are very messy. They don't comply. They don't respond always the way we hope that they will. Um, and you know, a standardized test such as the star test is a snapshot that gives us really useful information. In particular, it's exciting to see how that we're gonna overlay and see what steps that we're taking that are so smart and strategic are having the highest impact. Um, but it doesn't measure the whole, even the whole kid's understanding. You know, there's a lot of data out there. I just read an article by um the NEA about, you know, a multiple choice test doesn't doesn't really capture full understanding and it certainly doesn't capture a kid's emotional stability and well being. It doesn't capture um the ways in which their language is developing necessarily in oral language, especially for, you know, we have such a high percentage of English learners. Um, so I just, um, I want to reiterate my context speech, which is always that this is useful and important, but it is one slice of a very complicated picture. Um, so I'm grateful that we have it and I'm grateful for the hard work that you and your team do in collecting that data and and trying to make sense of it. Um, but I just want to make sure that everybody listening understands that this is not a reflection of the work of our teachers. Our teachers are incredibly diligent and hardworking and they are doing incredible things with limited resources in serving kids that are through no fault of their own struggling with the effects of that long window of of time in which school became um, you know, not not what it what it normally was. So um, I thank you for that, but I just wanted to give my context speech that that, you know, we are, I think we have a lot to feel optimistic and confident about with the work that our district is doing.
Trustee Jenkins.
I have in my normal, um, standardized way, I have my, you know, paragraphs, but Eve literally went through and gave context to so many things that I wanted to say. So I'll just say thank you. Um, save everybody at least six minutes, seven minutes. Um, and I do want to say that I really appreciate the executive summary. Um, I it's helpful to give context and certainly understand how you look at the numbers, um, which I appreciate. Um, do you want to talk about this and the growth? Or? Lisa and I were just chatting. Was it this slide?
Oh, no. So it's the slide one?
No, the subgroup data.
Data, students at or above benchmark, I think.
Thought you had it and I don't.
I I think next time, I would like to see that broke the uh growth percentiles, maybe broken down by those groups, so we can see how they're doing.
Would that be possible?
Would be that.
Is that hard to do?
Possible.
Absolutely, yeah. So you you want to see the SGP breakdown?
Yeah.
Same subgroups.
Yeah, cuz I'm more interested in the growth rather than the the absolute numbers for, right, for each.
We can definitely do that. Absolutely. Thank you.
Anyway, thank you very much.
Trustee Water.
Well, Dr. Abud, one thing, you really liked your job.
Yeah.
And um, that it's always a pleasure to see that. And second, thank you, trustee Reiser, because she said, people are messy. They are. And that's why I like them. I mean, really, it's just you. I I just keep looking at things. Uh, I keep thinking my teaching experience and you just have somebody who comes out of left wing, out of a who knows where, and this is person is just a natural genius uh from most unlikely source. And then you have other people who um you think are gonna do really, really well on a test. And I've said it before, I don't know, maybe their cat died the night before, but they just don't. And um, you know, we are dealing, you know, we're dealing with human beings and human beings are messy. And I'm looking at slide number twenty one, and I remember what you said. You said, um, you know, just be, you know, you've got growth. That doesn't mean, you know, they're say where they should be. Um, but it, but we have growth. I I'm all about growth. I like growth. Yeah, slide number twenty one. Um, of course, we're not going to have lots of people um at the level that uh we would like because they were starting way, way behind. But the point is that they're moving forward. And I was talking to, um, you know, we I was discussing this with the principal at um McPherson, you know, and he and he was saying, and he was showing me test results, you know, of different classrooms and going look at this movement. So it's it's clear we have movement, you know, I think we are on, I think we are on the right path. You know, you very eloquently stated all the things we're doing and um and uh I just think that we we're not just swimming against, um, you know, we have students who are second language. That's gonna, that's gonna be an issue. We have um some schools that are high poverty. You know, when parents are stressed, children are stressed, and they're not gonna do as well on a multiple choice test. And um, so you've got language, you've got economics, and then, you know, you've got other things. We have an entire culture, you know, that's um really against what we're trying to do. Um, I, you know, just keep moving forward and um I know we've got very hardworking teachers and uh looking forward to next year. Thank you for this presentation.
Okay, so I uh wanted to follow up a little bit on something that trustee Chu had mentioned. Um, it seems like maybe there would be an opportunity to more formalize for parents, like a course of study for their child, the asynchronous options that they could pursue over the summer, that we could just give them a suggested, hey, you could do ten dream boxes, uh, you know, a week over the summer asynchronously, and this would help you not lose any further time or or even maybe improve over the summertime, um, rather than, you know, the typical backslide that we know happens each summer. So I thought maybe that was an idea that was worth pursuing further and seeing if um we could at some point develop a more systematized program to uh help parents help their kids. Um, circling back to the presentation. Um, I was looking at the differences between what we were seeing at the elementary level where scores seemed to be increasing and we were seeing movement. And then at the secondary level, we had a plateau. There was six through twelfth grade and either scores did not move up or they moved down. Um, and so that is very concerning. Um, and I was hoping you might be able to shed some light on why at the elementary we are seeing the growth, but then when we get to secondary, it sort of stagnates.
That's a good question. Uh, I I can confirm that that is the case. That's the pattern that that we see there. Um, I don't know, Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings, if you wanted to speak to what was cause of that pattern that we see.
Um, I, well, first, thank you, Trust uh President Garcia for the question. And we are at the point, just because the data um was completed at the end of the school year, we are in the process of digging a little deeper into all of our data across all of our subgroups to determine what are some factors that might explain the the to determine what are some factors that might explain the the challenge that students are having and performing, you know, well on the spring assessment. We do know that at the high school level, there's possibly the the not as much buy in around the importance of the assessment, particularly at the 11th grade. So some concerns around given, oh geez, the lights went on again. Give me a sec. There you go. Given, given the fact that they take AP, given the fact that they take AP test, they have a, you know, the SAT, it becomes less of of an important of the importance for them. And then so that's a concern around the 11th grade star assessment and the spring. But in terms of the middle school, we have some grave concern that we obviously will be digging into and seeing what's happening with our with the scores at that at that grade level. And we will, that's that's the work this summer is really digging in. We have some sessions planned with Dr. Abud to really look at the data and make some very targeted and strategic plans for next year, specifically to address how students are performing at middle and and high school.
I look forward to hearing about the results of that study you guys are going to do for the summer. I was also rather surprised by the cohort analysis and what that demonstrated. It it showed that over a two-year period, our students are actually making losses and not gains, which is is really concerning. So I look forward also to a deeper explanation of that issue and how we might come with some suggestions on how to remedy that.
Sure. And and just to clarify on that cohort analysis, that's that's look, those bar charts that you're looking at show the percentage of students at or above benchmark. When we looked at the the average scaled score for each for a student in a particular grade level, that scaled score did go up from one year to the next. But as you saw in one of my earlier slides, the that minimum scale score from year to year does increase. And so what we saw is that in many cases, the average scaled score was just not, there was an increase, but it wasn't high enough to maintain that. So even though you do see the bar charts going down a little bit, it's not an indicator that there's no growth, just that there's not enough growth to be able to maintain that. So I just want to make sure that it's that that we don't interpret that as a slippage necessarily, but it but it is not going at the at the, thank you, yes, it's not, the increase is not at the rate that we want it to be. And that that is absolutely a concern.
And it's so little growth that we're not keeping up with the level that they were previously at. Which is a problem. So I look forward to seeing more information in the future about that issue. Anyone else?
I'd like to make it just a quick comment. So yeah, I just, I want to thank the Business Services Division, Dr. Booth, your hard work in making sure that we stay diligent about the implementation of this component, you know, it's it's really the core of our TK 12 assessment system. And I'm very proud of the fact that we really are implementing and gathering data across the system with really minimal resistance and 100% cooperation from staff across all of our school sites. So I know the amount of work that that takes in terms of our principals, making sure that that's happening. And our teachers carving out the time in their instructional days, you know, to to just create space for the assessment to happen three times a year. So I want to just thank you. Your leadership, the support and partnership of the instructional division that I know cares deeply about the results that we're attaining through the collection of this data. And then all the site administrators and our teacher workforce for implementing this so that we can continuously monitor the performance of our students in math and literacy. And with that being said, I want to echo, I think, you know, the trustees have said it in different ways. Growth is really important to me as a superintendent, and I think to all of our teams, you know, here at the district office, and I know to our site administrators, our aim is to see the progress of our students in these, you know, two core fundamental areas of math and literacy. And so we have laid substantial foundation over the course of the last three to five years to make sure that we have basic things like technology, curriculum, professional learning in order to ensure that the tools are in the classroom to position our teachers to have what they need to to really start ensuring that our students are making progress and growth. And so we're going to continue to monitor for that growth. We're going to see, you know, what are some classrooms, grade levels, schools that are starting to defy some of the trends and demonstrating growth in either math or literacy and really looking to see what we can learn from them. And then the board did stay here again late last night to solidify board annual priorities for next year. And I think that just to do a little bit of a sneak preview, I will do a formal presentation at the first board meeting in August. But we have, you know, committed to improving and targeting mathematics support and progress during key transition years, which I think is going to support this data. Or or, you know, support seeing more growth in the data. We've established a board annual prior around reading and writing across the curriculum, which should support growth in this area in this assessment tool. And then a board annual priority number three around supporting our multilingual learners, language development and academic success, which should also should support a demonstration of progress in both math and and literacy for our multilingual learners. And in this district, we have many of them. You know, over a quarter of our population are current multilingual learners. And then we have many, many reclassified students who still need that active monitoring. So I have faith in the priorities that we've set. I have confidence in the staff that we have and that we're going to continue to leverage and use the tools that we have provided the classroom in order to ensure that our students are making progress because that is our responsibility. So thank you very much.
Right, thank you. Now we'll move on to action items. J1, Business Services, J1A. Resolution 23-37, Budget Reserves.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right, Ms. Morales, can I get a roll call vote on this matter, please?
Yes, student board member Gomez.
Hi.
Trustee Gracia.
Hi.
Trustee Water.
Hi.
Trustee Riser.
Hi.
Trustee Chu.
Hi.
Trustee Jenkins.
Hi.
Trustee Hart.
Hi.
Trustee Gonzalez Mares.
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right. Item J1B, Resolution 23-38, Interfund Borrowing.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right. Ms. Morales, can I get a roll call vote on this item, please?
Yes, student board member Gomez.
Hi.
Trustee Gracia.
Hi.
Trustee Water.
Hi.
Trustee Riser.
Hi.
Trustee Chu.
Hi.
Trustee Jenkins.
Hi.
Trustee Hart.
Hi.
Trustee Gonzalez Mares.
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Item J1C, Adoption of 2023-24 Budget.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
I just wanted to briefly reiterate my concern that year three does not meet the board policy as adopted by the board that requires a 10% reserve. So we need to pay special attention to that moving forward so that we do not dip below that 10% threshold.
Yes, sir.
All right. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. All right. Item J1D, Lease Agreement with Napa United.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student board member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. J1E, N V U S D Boardroom Technology Upgrade Project.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student board member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. J2, Human Resources, J2A, Resolution 23-36, Exemption to the Separation from Service Requirement.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Ms. Morales, can I please have a roll call vote on this item?
Yes, student board member Gomez.
Hi.
Trustee Gracia.
Hi.
Trustee Water.
Hi.
Trustee Riser.
Hi.
Trustee Chu.
Hi.
Trustee Jenkins.
Hi.
Trustee Hart.
Hi.
Trustee Gonzalez Mares.
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. J2B, Agreement with Sunbelt Staffing.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student board member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. J2C, Request to Hire Educator Less Than Fully Credentialed.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student board member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. J2D, Approval of Restructuring of Communications and Community Engagement Leadership Position.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student board member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. J3, Instructional Services, J3A, Secondary Mathematics Core Instruction Material Adoption.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student board member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Item 3B, Memorandum of Understanding with the Boys and Girls Club of Napa Valley.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student board member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. J3C, Agreement with New Technology Network for Napa Junction.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student board member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. J3D, Contract with Race Work.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student board member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. J3E, Agreement with Connect Ed.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student board member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. J3F, Agreement with Cope Family Center.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student board member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. J3G, Agreement with Subject Technologies, Inc.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student board member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. J3H, Scholar System Proposal.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student board member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. J3I, Listenwise Premium Quote Approval.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student board member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. J3J, 2022-23 School Plan for Student Achievement Addendums.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student board member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. J3K, Local Control and Accountability Plan and LCAP Federal Addendum.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student board member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. J4 is Operational Services, J4A is Agreement with Cream Co. Meets.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this.
Student board member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. J4B, Agreement with AgLink, Inc.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student board member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. J4C, Agreement with Del Monte Capital Meets.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student board member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. J4D, Agreement with Cisco Food Services.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this.
Student board member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. J4E, Agreement with Gold Star Foods.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any? First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this.
Student Board Member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. J four F, Agreement with Napa County Services.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. J four G, Agreement with Reculti Energy.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. J five, School Planning and Construction. J five A, we will have a public hearing. Uh, and then um, potentially move to adopt uh, resolution twenty-three thirty-nine to approve the housing plan and use of. Pupils' grants for new construction funding for former River Middle School, current Unidos Middle School. SPC number eight point three dash two, three. Uh, so I will open the public hearing. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
I will now close the public hearing. Can I get a motion?
I will move to approve. Second.
I have a first by trustee Chu, a second by trustee Riser. Uh, Ms. Morales, can I please get a roll call vote on this item?
Yes, student board member Gomez.
Hi.
Trustee Gracia.
Hi.
Trustee Water.
Hi.
Trustee Riser.
Hi.
Trustee Chu.
Hi.
Trustee Jankowicz.
I.
Trustee Hart.
I.
Trustee Gonzalez Mares.
I.
Motion passes, thank you.
Okay, J five B, SPC number one point one seven dash two, three. Implementation Plan for Measure A two.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this.
Uh, Student Board Member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Bye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. J five C, SPC seven point one one dash two, three. Request to surplus one relocatable building at Vintage High School.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. J five D, SPC number seven point one two dash two, three. Request to surplus one trailer at Valley Oak High School.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. E, SPC number ten point four dash two, three, request to approve Citizen Bond Oversight Committee.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member Gomez.
Hi.
Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Uh, J five F, SPC sixteen four nine dash one, seven. Request for Design Services by Gates and Associates. For Phase Four of Districtwide Fencing Project.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this.
Student Board Member Gomez.
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Uh, now we're on to item K, informational items. Uh, item K one is General Services. Uh, K one A, uh, there's no, um, committee has not met. Uh, K one B, uh, is the same, the committee has not met. K one, uh, C, um, the uh. Finance Committee, there are supporting minutes there. Does anyone have any? Thing they want to discuss on this item? Mr. Michaels, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this.
Okay, then we'll move on to item uh, K one. Uh, D, which is the Policy Committee, and they have also not met. Uh, so we will move on to item two, Instructional Services. K two A, uh, Local Control and Accountability Plan Performance Indicator. Um, do we have any discussion by trustees on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Michaels, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this.
All right. Uh, item L, Additional Suggestions and Comments from Board Members and the Superintendent.
I like an audit on my sign as to why it falls so much right today, but that wasn't me. I have two witnesses.
Well, if you don't push it off the edge, it doesn't.
It didn't. We will note the request for the audit. That's a great, light, doable item to end the last board meeting of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
All right, and then uh, item M. Future Agenda Items. Um.
Kind of.
So. Yeah, I I look forward to the presentation on the ILL study we're conducting as per my original request from September of last year. So I I look forward to when that comes. And then item in adjournment, I move to adjourn.
Second.
First by myself, second by trustee Chu. All those in favor?
Hi.
Meeting is adjourned at ten o'clock on the dot.